Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call. For Mrs. Vaughn, we're all here except for Pat. And that's why I'm in the special seat tonight. It's my big night. It's going to be a great meeting. It's April the 15th, but it will no longer be known as Tax Day. It's going to be known as something much more fun. Um, I need an approval for the agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Amy. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you. Do we have any individuals to address the board on an agenda item or a non-agenda item tonight? Good, thank you. It's so nice to see so many people here. Great. Okay, we're going to talk about the Holland scholarships, which is a wonderful April 15th thing to talk about. The Committee for the Holland Scholarship Awards met on Tuesday, April the 9th, 2019, and awarded $22,250 to students from Tullahoma High School. The scholarship was created in 1978 by a trust fund of $400,000 established by John I. Holland. In anticipation of this award, a total of $1,119,050 has been awarded to Tullahoma High School graduates over the years. Award information is to be kept confidential until the THS Awards Program on May 9th, 2019. And tonight Jim Henry is here, who is the trustee of the scholarship fund, to speak with us.
Well, actually, I'm not a trustee. The trustees, under John Vaughn's will, is actually a bank in Nashville, but he had a committee for allocating the grant scholarships. It's made up of people from Tallahassee. It's a lawyer, a banker, the superintendent of the schools, a preacher, and then a laborer. There are five of us total. And you've already given the essence of all the information, but the main point is that John Holland, who was a co-executive here in Tallahassee, sent this up to his will. It was $400,000 he left in his trust. And nineteen, as you said, since 1978, passed away. Here we are, you know, fifty years later, we've given out a million two. We've still got the $400,000. It's a great thing for the city of Tallahassee that he did. It's what lived on for generations. Uh, but you said that the essence of it being awarded $22,250, that puts us up to almost a million two that we've actually granted now. This year, I mean, you've got the list. I guess we'd ask you all to approve them, give them confidential, and we'll make the presentations on the awards night.
Great, thank you so much. What a wonderful thing for so many students. Um, I believe you've all seen the list of Holland Scholarship awards for... Uh, I need a motion?
So moved.
Steve, the motion. Steve, Dr. Lynn, second.
Second.
I believe that would be Therese Lawson. All in favor of accepting the nominees for the Holland Scholarship, raise your hand. All opposed? Very good. Um, the consent agenda. A motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, no, 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 no. I missed the most, the most special, special thing. The Teacher of the Year. That's what April 15th is going to be about now, Teacher of the Year. So great to see all of you here. We're so proud of you. And now I'll speak to get Mr. Henry to speak again about the Tullahoma Educational Foundation.
Well, normally prior years, y'all give the whole package of awards at first, and then we come behind.
Okay, that's fine. That'll be fine, that's fine, okay, Mr. Carter?
Let's walk around the front.
Okay.
For those in the audience, uh... Kim has been so excited to be a part of this. And that we had seen I even practiced this.
Yes, we did. We did.
Because really and truly, the focus is on the recipients of the award. And as a newcomer to the Tallahassee City Schools, uh, this Teacher of the Year nominated by your peers and voted on by your peers is something you just don't see in all school districts. Uh, this is my first experience in being a part of it. And, uh, and again, I know no higher honor than to be nominated and recognized by your peers. And so, at this time, uh, what we do is we will be recognizing the 2019, 2020 Tullahoma City Schools Teachers of the Year recipients. We'll ask that you come up here. Uh, Ms. Kim has a certificate and a check for you. And that, following that... Make sure you got your right ones here. There you go. Uh, following that, we would ask that all the recipients, uh, please wait over there by the Tennessee flag. And then, uh, once we have them all recognized, we will bring up the district level winners. All right? Okay? Are we ready?
We're trying to be.
This is the one part we didn't practice. Uh, the first recipient of 1920, 19, 2019, 2020, uh, Teacher of the Year recipient from Bel Air Elementary is Ms. Karen King.
Congratulations.
You know, uh, again, you know, coming in here, uh, Ms. King has a, uh, a, a social media footprint on Twitter. If you ever want to see what's going on in her classroom, just go to Twitter and she'll tell you. And the thing of this too is that, uh, she is sharing her expertise and skills with teachers throughout the district. In fact, uh, one of the teachers that was hired, uh, at Farron this past year, a year ago, was your student teacher. And she, your Pat paying it forward, so congratulations.
Yeah, that's great, thank you so much.
From East Lincoln Elementary, Miranda Tucker, first grade. You know, it was fun talking with you before we came in here and kind of showing you, uh, kind of the timeline of where we're going to go between twenty, between now and to 2025. You know, the thing that was exciting, first of all, if you're teaching first grade, there's a special place in you. And, and second of all, your enthusiasm about helping to make it go and what you can do to help, uh, continue this transformation, it's outstanding. So thank you very much, congratulations. Ms. Tammy Forkey, special ed, Jack T. Farron.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You know, someone once told me that special ed teachers have the patience of Joe. And having been in Farron, seeing how you interact with the young people, uh, I believe that to be true. So thank you very much for your contributions and thank you for being a part of the Tallahassee City Schools. And you do make a difference, so thank you. Also from, uh, in the special ed department, from Rotary Lee, Ashley Gadsen. Now, if you see her smile, if you were, look at her smile now. I mean, if you were a, a young person and to have, and to come into class and see that smile every day, you couldn't help but be fired up, right? There you go. Congratulations as well, and thank you.
I appreciate it.
From East Middle School, Julie Kasten. You know, I thought I had a big Twitter following. But if you go to Twitter, uh, it has been amazing watching you get connected globally to educators. And, uh, you know, it's one thing when I'm sending out tweets. It's another thing when one of the staff says, "John, there's an ed check. Going to start up with Julie Kasten, get on right now and be a part of it." But, uh, you, you continue to impress me and, and again, your enthusiasm and what you do for children, it's greatly appreciated, thank you. From West Middle School, uh, Christopher King. You know, I, I, coming to know you and then also coming to know your wife, I would love to be a mouse in your kitchen at night when you are at home discussing work.
I'm coming to wash out.
But, uh, again, having gotten to know you and, uh, the contribution you made to the children, they truly respect you. And from this award today, you are also respected by your peers. So thank you for all that you do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
From Tallahassee High School, in the CAD department, which is computer assistance drafting, Mr. Randy Edwards.
Randy, congratulations. And I think Chris might have some.
You know, this is like life here, you know? Um, but, uh, one of the things that, in my short time here, uh, you know, Randy's enthusiasm for what he does, I think it was during spring break you were up here. And, uh, I was going into the office, let him in, he had some papers to drop off. And I think I counted nine times that you said, "John, come visit my classroom. Come see what we're doing. Come visit my classroom."
I'm seeing you.
Well, you know, do you know? But, but, you know, the thing of it is too, uh, as we stood there talking, what, what I noticed and care about is that you could, you could talk about the students that have come through your program that are involved in business and industry here in Tallahassee. And so the investment that you've made, many, much of that investment has stayed right here. So again, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And I'll get there. Also from Tallahassee High School, uh, from the machine shop area, uh, Mr. Keith Gillan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, did you come in with a sport coat?
No.
Uh, I, I gotta say too, Mr. Gillan, uh, the, the lives that you have taught, you have prepared young people to, in some instance, uh, leave Tallahassee High School with one or two years of additional training, get into great careers with bright futures and making a decent wage. So, uh, we want to continue that. We want to, we want to make sure that, uh, we're providing more, more young people with those opportunities. It, it, it is fun to watch you, uh, because I have been hit. Just saying. And, and, uh, again, uh, the way you interact with the students and taking them to competitions, what was that, over in Chattanooga and such? And I know you're modest, but how many place or place winners did we have over there?
Uh, we had five. Mr. Edwards had a first place in drafting, and then we shared a first place in a team competition. And then I had a second place in machining. And we had a girl that competed, uh, in job interview, and she ended up with third place.
Wow. That's, that's outstanding, outstanding. So thank you and thank you also.
Thank you so much.
And from the English department, uh, Charlie Harrison. You know, sir, uh, one of the greatest gifts, uh, that we can give our children is the ability to communicate, both morally and in writing. And the other thing too is also to gain an appreciation of, of literature. And, uh, well, you hit on all three of those, so there you go. I appreciate you very much, thank you. At this time, we would like to have the district level winners. Uh, we'll call your names if you come over here and be recognized as well. Ms. Karen King.
Thank you so much for all that you do. I'm delighted by your peers.
Why don't you just stay right here, right? And, uh, Mr. Christopher King.
This is our first husband and wife team.
I was teasing with them earlier, I said, "You guys are the power couple of education."
You get two shots at a corner, right?
I've heard that like 50,000 times. And, and also Mr. Randy Edwards. And, and these are our district level winners. To all of you, you make a big difference in the lives of the young people in the Tallahassee City Schools. And the greatest gift that we can ever give is the gift to prepare young people for what they're going to do next. And, uh, for what it's worth, ladies and gentlemen, you all have my greatest respect. So how about a round of applause for one more?
Well, I was just going to say briefly that the, the important part here, the focus is not on the giver of the check, it's the receivers of the check. Because these are people that have been selected by your peers to be the Teacher of the Year, one at each level. And the Tullahoma Education Foundation, uh, is a group that was started about thirty years ago to try to advance the Tallahassee City School system. And thirty years later, it's still operating. Uh, I've tried to check the records, sometimes going back to the original parts. I'm going to sketch you, but the best I can tell, tonight's the 24th time we've given Teacher of the Year awards. And the grants have totaled over $70,000. Uh, so that's come from donations from the community to the Tullahoma Education Foundation that are now being used to supplement the awards given by the system for the Teachers of the Year at the district level. So to all of you who just got the checks, congratulations, and we appreciate all that you do.
And, and remember too, I, I do want to mention, uh, last Friday, uh, we did a presentation from Bel Air. We were able to, uh, do a video chat with the members of Rotary. And during that video chat, uh, Dr. Norris and some of our students lifted up the Maker Space that is at, uh, Bel Air Elementary. And that was, and how the children were so excited to be in that space. And I know that's one of many contributions the Education Foundation has made to the district. And, but again, for that school, for that moment, that we were able to share that with the Rotary, there could have been others. But I do again want to say thank you to you and thank you to the Education Foundation.
It's the Education Foundation, it's a group of people that are concerned about the city and they want to try to help the education system as much as we can, and we appreciate all that you guys do.
And you're getting ready to kick off a fundraising drive too, aren't you?
I think so, I think so. We, we've, we had a big fundraising drive. It's been twenty-five years, twenty, twenty-five years ago since we did it. Uh, we've, we're still sitting on that endowment, but it's been twenty, twenty-five years. We want to try to grow it, and we're going to kick that off probably, our official annual meeting is tomorrow night. So we're going to kick that off maybe tomorrow night, see where it takes us.
Well, we're excited and, and thank you for all the time.
Thank you guys.
We really, really love having you all at our meeting, but, but we are also very understanding of the need to leave. So any of you that need to leave now, um, that is perfectly fine. Okay, now we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Agenda, don't, y'all do not tell Pat about any of my mistakes. Consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Amy Johnson. Second by Jessica Forkey. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed? Great. Moving to unfinished business, buildings and grounds.
I can speak, uh, to that. Chairman Walsh, uh, is actually stranded in Newark because of the lizards happening in the northwest, the planes from Newark to Chicago to Minneapolis, so all, you're grounded or being diverted. And so, um, last time I talked with Chairman Walsh, he was in Newark Airport, so... The, I guess the thing that I would share with you is the buildings and grounds, uh, they had met and had reviewed, uh, directions going forward. Work is, uh, in a final stage. We've talked with Mr. Miller as far as the legal documents for, I just went morning, um, Bel Air. And I, I think we're, we're close to completion on that, starting that work. Uh, going forward, we're going to be looking for a time for the, uh, Buildings and Grounds, uh, work group to meet. The suggestion was that we would, uh, meet in each one of the buildings. That way we can kind of do a walkthrough and, um, kind of see where we're at. And, and Therese, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were typically looking at the last Friday, last Friday of each month at, uh, 7:30, 8 o'clock, time to be determined. I think, what was the first one?
East Lincoln.
East Lincoln, so, uh, that would be all that I would have as far as that goes.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we're moving to the budget?
Correct, I, I can speak to that as well too. Um, just, uh, here in the last forty-eight hours, we did receive, uh, an estimate projecting what our BEP money would be. Uh, there is a slight increase over last year to this year, which we see as a good thing. The, uh, the work group for the, the budget, uh, Mr. Pat Welch and also, uh, Ms. Kim here, we have had conversations, uh, in reference to where we are at financially. And, uh, we're working on a plan, uh, for allocating funds going forward. Got a little side note to all that. Mr. Rogli sitting here, we, we got our audit. And, uh, I do think a round of applause is appropriate for him because he came back with no audit findings. One of, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Rogli said when I came on board, he said, "Boss," he says, "I'll keep you out of jail and I'll keep you out of trouble." So I appreciate it on both sides. Unless there was anything else you wanted to add?
Um, we had a really good meeting, and, uh, Mr. Rogli is working, um, our, our way out of some of our expenditure from last year, and so things, things are better. So it's, we're doing very well. Lots to do on that. Um, okay, TCS, Dr. Carter, Board Policy, Section Six, Students?
There are no changes recommended by the district president this time.
Okay. And we, we are not requiring a vote?
Correct.
Very good. Okay, on to the mission statement?
Okay. Uh, I can speak to that. I think earlier I had sent the board members out another worksheet on, on identification or something. I need some, uh, some help is to, to the breakout pieces of the, of the mission statement. So if you could do that electronically and, and send that to me, that would be greatly appreciated. With, with your permission, that kind of folds into the update on the strategic plan.
That would be great, there, right?
Uh, at our last work session, uh, it was determined that we would work on a strategic plan internally and that, uh, there are two next steps that we need to take. One of the next steps, uh, is again, from the board table, uh, getting some, some definition or direction as to what each of the mission statement parts, what it, I guess what it gets down to is what does it mean to you? Okay? And, and so that will help in our next step. Uh, the other piece in our next step is, um, creating a baseline of data points to build from. We all know that by 2025, we want to be in a different condition. And board members have all been given copies of the QED model as to what that looks like. And, um, kind of the, the strategies for getting there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but board members, you've also been, if you haven't, we'll see until you get a copy of the Learning Transformed book, the Blue Copy book, right? Because that will be our playbook and that will be the strategies that we use to kind of get us to that 2025. Now, we've got our target, we've got strategies. The next piece is creating some data points that we can use as a baseline to compare where we're at today to where we're going to be at a year from now, two years from now, and so on. Uh, my experience in previous districts of doing this, uh, was, uh, using the state assessment tests and, uh, areas that we were identified as, as being lower, needing improvement, that became some of the, the data points as we went forward. The challenge we have here is that, uh, validity and assurances with the state achievement tests, we don't have. So, uh, Susan and I and the Renaissance team, you know, we're going to be having discussions as to what some of those data points might be and bring them to you all. Uh, for the benefit of the board, I did send you out a, a one-pager from Westside School District, right? And I also sent you out a one-pager of, of my previous school district where we use graduation rates, we use kids that, uh, as juniors and seniors to college classes. Uh, we looked at, uh, as another point, because we were, we were so high poverty, how many children were actually going on to college? And, you know, those might be some data points that we will recommend to you that we can look at over time. Uh, another one that I think would be good, um, is, uh, you know, five, 10, 15-year surveys of alumnus as to where they're at now. And looking back at their high school experience, did that help them to get where they wanted to be? And again, I'm not making recommendations at this point, other than to say, the next steps are creating those data points that we can use, those mile markers. And then also too, a little more direction as far as, um, definition from your chairs, what, what the mission statement is. Uh, as far as the vision statement is concerned, uh, we did have a vision statement that was brought forward to the board. I've, I've received comments from some of you in that wanting to maybe perhaps revisit it, which I'm not opposed to that, I'm not opposed to that. And my, my suggestion, uh, Madam President, is...
Wow.
Isn't that good? That feel good?
That is, it does.
My suggestion is, um, we're at a point in time now, as we get into the summertime, where, you know, scheduling another meeting on top of what we're doing, uh, does put us in a crunch for time. My rec, my, my recommendation would be that we would extend out our, our work sessions and maybe start a little bit earlier. I've, I've talked to Sandy and, and, you know, either having like sub sandwiches here or pizza or something along those lines. And, uh, at our next work session, uh, have that discussion on the vision statement. And then I'd like to, uh, talk about, you know, those definitions of what the mission statement is. And, and, uh, would like to at that time, uh, maybe make some suggestions on what we believe might be good mile markers to get started with. That's not saying you can't add them and subtract them, but we need to have something that we use as our starting line. So as we go forward, um, as we go forward, we got something we can look back at so we can tell patrons, "Yeah, see, we were here and we did grow and we went here and so on." Just another thought popping in my head. One of the, the data points we've used, I've used in districts in the past is retention, how many children are retained from year to year? Uh, one other, I'm just kind of having a flashback, but, um...
How about early graduates?
That was another one. Early graduates that went into the workforce.
What about like C, like so CTE offerings, CTE offerings, like that we hope to grow that, like having that?
That, that would, that would be another, you know, we currently today have these, right, CTE offerings. What is it, could we have in the future? Uh, along with that, I, I think we need to have, um, we need to be thinking about CTE a little differently. And that, um, there are white collar jobs and blue collar jobs. And what we want to start thinking about is what a lot of people are referring to as light blue collar jobs. And these would be the ones that would be the computer programmers. That would be the ones that, um, uh, you know, are doing research in the laboratory. Uh, the ones that are working in corporate offices as project managers and such. But, so, when we say CTE, we, we got a, and I don't know a word to use to, uh, supplement for that or change it. Because when, it's just like, uh, one of the things I've learned being here in the South that a brown colored carpet... a brown-colored carbonated beverage, no matter what it is, is a Coke. And if you say pop or soda, nobody knows what you're talking about. And there's no difference in between Pepsi can be Coke, Coke can be Coke, Fresca can be Coke. And so, and I guess the analogy I use is with CTE, we need to think of CTE differently. And then, to be honest with you, that's one of the things that we saw when we were in, at the Apex up in Walkeen and stuff. Which, I'm going to go down another rabbit hole here real quick. And that is because we are thinking differently, things are coming to us. And so out of the color blue, we had a phone call and an invitation to go down here to Light Tube today that the STEM School in Chattanooga had reached out to us about partnering with, is it a 40K?
The 4K.
4K microscope, a 4K microscope. Whereas if you Google that and look at that, basically that can zoom down into the molecular structure of things. And then whatever you see gets put up on a plasma screen TV. We talked to them today about being a part of that grant. It's a USDA grant. And that our request was to make it available to all seven schools in the district. So we could have elementary and middle school kids working with us as well as high school kids. But again, doing that work as a scientist or a researcher or something like that, that's CTE, but it's more of those light blue collar jobs. The other thing, too, just to make mention of, because we are moving into the summertime, schedules are getting busy. As far as any kind of out-of-state trips to go and see some things, I know some of the administration is going to go see a school for inclusion for special ed, but board members will look to make additional trips in the fall because there are some things that you need to go and see. So to recap, updating our strategic plan, it's a process. Our next piece of the process will be during our work session with the board's permission. We'll have some snacks, light lunch here, supper, and we'll continue to move forward. The draft is due in July, so we have some time. And the final working document isn't due until, I think it's like October 19th. So we have some time. The other pieces, we're going forward after we get a draft done. And in my mind, when we're starting school up again, that would be a good time to share that working draft with patrons as they bring their kids back to school and to get some of the input at that point.
Hey, John, just real quick, on the vision statement, since it seemed like we originally were pretty all in agreement with it, could people just email if they have some recommendations?
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking. But we still, even though you email it to me, I can compile it, but we still, or actually Sandy will compile it. That'll be, that needs to have a discussion of the entire board and that's what we would do. So yeah, you email it to me, that would be fantastic. And with that, I think...
Okay. What, can we specifically state when we're going to start the work session? It's going to be in May. So are we going to meet at 4:30, quarter to 5:00? Are we staying late? Can we go ahead and get that decided?
Can we submit to the date again? Like, can y'all remind me of the date in May? Does anyone know what it is?
It's May 6.
May 6.
Well, I recommend early, not late.
Okay. So say starting, say what time, Teresa, do you think we should start?
I'd say 4:30.
4:30?
Yeah.
Would 4:30 work? I would rather be on the front end than the back end. Does that work for you?
I can't do that. I understand that.
Okay. Does 4:30 work for everyone?
Dr. Lynn, is that...
Sure, sure. I think we ought to come that morning and stay until midnight.
Well, you stay up all night anyway. Okay, so we're, so I'm going to assume it's going to be okay with Pat. If not, I'm sure he'll let us know.
So we'll meet at 4:30.
So we're going to, we're going to meet at 4:30 to start here, to start working on the strategic plan.
Okay. We'll do the other things that we need to do at that, I mean, during the scope of that time, but we will, because there's other things you need to look at during your work session.
So we'll start the strategic plan, I was thinking maybe at 4:30 to 5:30, right? And then we go into the work session of the agenda of the work session? Is that what you all were thinking? And then we can, if we need to add any more time?
That's fine.
Okay? Because it's going to take the majority of the time, correct?
We will have some good discussion, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions on that, everybody? Everybody feel good about that? And are we thinking that for May and June? Everyone, May and June?
Okay, so June is...
June is the 3rd.
June the 3rd.
June the 3rd.
Right. I will be absent from the first weekend, June, due to prior arrangement.
Okay. And I know everybody's sick or busy.
We're going to try to do that one at 4:30, too, right? Wasn't that the expectation, guys?
I think so.
Are we going to have a July work session? Sort of talked about that. We kicked it around.
I would prefer not.
Like a study session or just a...
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever name be.
Well, I know the past said he would rather have a study session than a meeting.
Well, the thing of it is, we have a lot of vacations and things and a lot of us are out of town. But I mean, that's just how it's usually been and the way we usually do. But now if y'all want to do it differently...
What if we see what kind of progress we're making in May and June? And then maybe add some...
Is there nothing in June? We could remember, is there just nothing difficult in July?
Right.
So I guess if we were to see how we're doing, maybe just something mid-July, just cut it in the middle and do one thing, it wouldn't obviously be the schedule.
I would think it'd be a study session instead of...
I think so, too. Right.
Didn't we have an extra meeting in July, just like last year or year before?
Well, I think we did.
Oh, we had to come in?
It was kind of a special call meeting, maybe, or some special meeting, right, search, I believe. Or a study session, maybe.
I do think something for the board to consider is that the students come back in July and then you all don't meet until, you know, August. And I, again, I think that's, that's a long period of time, not to me, but I do think we'll just see where we're at with the strategic plan at that point. If we need to do something, we can do it.
Study session.
Right. Right. I think that would be better.
And then if there is any work to be done, we can just be flexible and go forward with that.
Any questions? Everybody good with that?
Good.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to new business and teacher tenure. The list was presented to us at our last study session. I'm sure if you had any questions, you ask those of whomever. So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the teacher tenure list. Teresa Lawson with the motion and a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Sandy, did you? Okay, thank you. Great. Okay, tuition?
I believe we have a recommendation for that. I didn't mean to speak, is that right?
No, you go ahead. I'm good. I just wanted to ask.
Okay. If the board, the public members, the question was raised earlier on a benefit for Toloma City School employees that perhaps maybe reside outside of the school district, that for those employees that are with the school district and are in good standing, that that tuition, that tuition be waived. Jessica and I have had multiple conversations on that. I do see that as a benefit for drawing recruiting employees here that may not necessarily live here. I also would like to remind the board that, you know, in the event that we do allow those students in, Mr. Rogli, you correct me if I'm wrong, that the BEP money would follow them as well, too. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we may be losing some of the tuition money, but we would be gaining with the money coming in from other districts. So I support Jessica's suggestion and it would be my recommendation to go forward with the proposal.
So the motion is all current TCS employees in good standing that reside outside the district will have student tuition waived for as long as they are employed with TCS. So I'd like to make the motion. You'd like to make the motion. Okay.
I'll second.
Second, by Dr. Lynn. All in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Thank you. Excellent. Approval to compete?
Right now, we are, we have been reviewing board policy to make sure that we are adhering to it as such. One of the things that we came upon, as the board is aware and patrons, is that we've got some sharpshooters out in the elementary schools. And that our archery students or the archery club have done very, very well. And I see Dr. Norris, I see Mr. Hartro, and they're competing in Nationals. Is that, what's up for them next?
Yes.
That is just simply outstanding. And that under board policy, for the clubs to be able to have excused absences from school and to be able to participate, it needs written permission from the board. And I would highly recommend, without any reservation, that the board, our minutes tonight should suffice, but that the archery students be granted permission to attend and that their coaches that are going with them, it would be in my purr that they would, I would see this as a professional thing.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
You're going to have to make a motion, second.
Okay, so if I make the motion, I'm making a motion that they have the permission to compete.
Right.
And that the coaches have just...
So that part's in my purr.
Okay.
Just, the motion would be to allow the students to participate, the archery students to participate during school hours.
Okay. I'll make the motion to allow the archery students to participate during school hours.
Okay. Motion by Teresa Lawson, second?
I will second that. Or she will.
She wants her second.
Second by Jessica, further. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you. Excellent and good luck.
They have done just an amazing job. I'm so proud of them. I mean, just, they're excellent. The coach is wonderful.
Really outstanding. Good luck to you all.
Well, I was over at East Lincoln the other day and I see Mr. Hartro out there. The one young lady, the top lady, out of a possible score of 100, what was her score?
She's, 300 is the best.
Right.
And she shot like 280 or 285.
That's just simply amazing. And Dr. Norris, not to be outdone, do you remember what your top shooter shot?
I don't know.
Okay. But we have, we have students from both those schools that are participating, so I see that's a good thing.
Excellent. Superintendent's report?
I think I've shared with you everything up to date. I guess the thing that, again, I would lift up to the board is that these are exciting times at Toloma. And that we continue to look over the horizon. And because we are thinking differently, it's neat that we're getting calls from other areas to ask if we will partner and, just like with the STEM School contacting us. I have to share with the board that, so we're on this call with the representative from the STEM School and they are wanting to partner with the school and do this project with the microscope and all that. I don't, I don't remember if it was the Light Tube representative or Susan. We also had Dr. Zimmerman in the room and Lisa Lee, one of the teachers. But somebody asked the person in Chattanooga, "Why are you calling us?" And they said, "Well, for two reasons. The first reason is they wanted to connect with a rural school and because of our enrollment size, we checked that box." And the other thing was, well, because Toloma's just, you're just more advanced than anybody else around. And coming from folks at the Chattanooga STEM School, I thought that was, that was pretty cool. So it's just an affirmation. I think we're going in a good direction and I'm excited to see where we're going to be a year from now.
It's exciting. If, anything else?
I don't believe so at this time.
And Mrs. Keane is not here tonight?
She is not.
So personnel?
One hour for the rest of this school year and our music teacher for Toloma High School, Katie Stowers.
Okay, great.
I'm waiting to be in.
Okay, is there anything else?
I just wanted to make a mention about testing, only because we just started it here in Toloma. And I had pulled up the hours required by our students. I'd asked Susan Bing to provide that for me. And I just want to read it real quick because I think we should all know it. But for our third through fourth grade, they have 5.75 hours and that's just testing time. So it's not seat time, it's not how much time this is consuming of their lives and their teacher lives. Grade five is 6.5 hours and grade six through eight is 8.83 hours. So I think that the state's always kind of tried to insist that they're working on whittling that away and it's still so grossly inappropriate for the amount of time. Because I know back when we were really in this struggle and fight, we had asked what the professional testing is like. And ACT, which would be, you know, what you're really trying to push students to be prepared for, is two point, I mean, it's two hours and 55 minutes. And so I'm like, you know, we have sixth graders, they're doing almost three times the amount for what we're asking, you know, kids are going to go into colleges to do. And then, and I thought, I was, you know, talking to my husband, I'm like, the GMAT, you know, what I took to get my master's, you know, to get to that program was under four. You know, GRE, any of these. And so I was like, let me go back and research and see, maybe ACT is all of a sudden, you know, you're sitting in there for seven hours. No, you're not. So we're still wildly inappropriate for our testing times. And I would like for the students in particular, and teachers and parents, to understand that while right now we're really focused on our local initiatives for what we're doing on the day-to-day, which is really important for our students, that I would not want them to think that we have forgotten what this couple of weeks is going to be like and that we are still as committed to that work, to change that for our students. So I just don't want anyone to get the impression that we weren't as adamant about that because it has not changed. It has not improved. So we're going to have to continue to fight that battle, so.
And I was there, I was a proctor today at Fair Elementary School, who by the way was incredibly prepared. And the kids were all fine and happy and great and feeling good about everything. And it's just, it was, maybe was it three and a half hours today for us? And on the booklet, it was listed 80 minutes because there is no consideration for giving instruction or closing your book or opening your book or picking up your pencil or blowing your nose 800 times or any question or them turning the page and all of a sudden them seeing something that, for whatever reason, now understand, nobody can look at these. Nobody. The teachers cannot look, I cannot look, no one can, we don't know. But they see something that alarms them for whatever reason. And then you see all these little hands go up. And so not being able to answer questions and not to even really be able to encourage, just, you know, I mean, there's, there's nothing that you can do. Also, sitting and listening to, which I feel like I can say, I mean, I cannot repeat it, but I was listening and I was a proctor, to the passage that was read to the kids that they were going to write from. I mean, I thought I was going to, my head was going to blow. While I'm sitting there listening to that, thinking that third graders are going to write a paragraph about that, that passage. I tried to think about what I would write and it was one sentence. And it was just, and then I felt pretty good about it. I'm like, that's good, that's going to, that's going to work. I'm going to be scoring pretty good on that. But it really, we really cannot give up that good fight. And it was, and I could see, I know that Debbie was so concerned about making sure that, that the kids, and I know all of you, Woody and Scotty and April, all of you and anyone else that came to test her, that the kids feel fine and that their best is wonderful and we're proud of them no matter what. But I could feel my teacher, just in reading her directions, they're so difficult to follow. It is craziness. And she, y'all, they cannot read those directions ahead of time. They break the seal right before they read them to the children.
And I know last year there were errors...
Oh, yes.
In the test.
There's still errors.
So I wondered about that, like the errors, because you're telling them, "Look for this," and that's not what's on there.
And it's not there. And it's different pages and it's just, it's very difficult. So, and everybody was doing a great job and I know you all did in every school. And I have already made calls today. I was so hot mad. They were so happy to hear from me. But we do have to make changes and it's costing millions and millions and...
But we do have to make changes, and it's costing millions and millions and millions of dollars, and we're receiving nothing from it. It's not a benefit, not to our students, not to our teachers, not to our system. So we will keep up the good fight, and we appreciate everybody's support. Anyone else?
I also would be in agreement with what you've said, and I've said at the district meetings for TSAT and BA before and other meetings, if we follow the money trail, we'll see why these kinds of things are happening. And someone once said, look at all the lobbyist money, $60 million or whatever that's given to try to influence people to go with this, and someone told me one time, he said, you can't stop people from standing in line to give away millions as long as they stand to make billions. And so I think that's what we need to really look at, it's a travesty, and our students, the children are suffering because of it, and somebody's making a big profit. That's my side.
And I will, I will also say, I mean, some of you know that I have worked as a scorer as well, because I wanted to see what exactly happened, and so I did my little experiment. And I was grading junior level material, I did not grade elementary, not score, I scored it, I scored it, I did not grade it. But that experience just made me an absolute believer in local testing. I saw no point, particularly when it came to essays, because that's what I was scoring, was essays. And it's corrupt in its nature as well, because as long as the student has followed a rubric, has met the demands of the rubric according to the scorers, even though they have spelling errors, and even though some of the content that they put down makes no sense, and I'm an English graduate, I, that's my major, I had to set that aside and just say, okay, but they had three sub-paragraphs. So that showed me, you're not scoring, you're not scoring for what they even are thinking. And so I'm just saying, I am totally against it, I'm in the fight.
Good. We appreciate all of you, and y'all, thank you so much for being patient with me in my first day as president. My first and last day as president of Tolomas, everything. Y'all are wonderful, and thanks to everybody so much, and meeting is adjourned.
All right.